Can you please call the board?
This is Lord.
Here.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe. Robinson. Mr. Martin.
Present.
This is Paul Strini.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Right over.
And Mr. Tree.
And here, and with that, we have a forum, so we've been trying to fund the meetings.
................................................
All right, thank you and welcome everyone. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do. Uh, the first individual is Bart Puzzic.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you'd like to stand behind the podium, you're welcome.
Do I start over with like my proposition with the budget plan or, cause uh, this is the first time I'm showing up this meeting.
You just speak freely.
Okay, so my name is Bart, I live in uh, Primrose Lake, if anyone knows, it's uh, unincorporated Hampshire. Uh, I just have a proposition of possibly reinstating the... I was told there was supposed to be a wall built there, instead we ended up getting like the pine trees. So I was hoping that maybe we could reconsider the possibility of having those walls put up on 90.
So there's been talk about that over the years.
Yeah.
But I know that the, so, that being that it's outside the village limits, that would be between, I don't know, the property owner's section of county and then uh, the tollway authority. We could help facilitate a conversation, but I, I don't necessarily know that the village would get involved in funding that, that's not our...
Okay, cause that's what, when I spoke to the HOA leader over there who was my neighbor, she said that it was brought up, but instead of getting that, we ended up getting the pine trees, so that's why I'm just curious.
That was probably...
I don't know the details.
Well, before, so it's probably before any of our time here on the board, and that, so this is not the first time that we've heard of conversations such as this, that it happened, but it was before our time on the board. But that ultimately has to do with the tollway authority.
Okay, so I have to give you... Okay.
So, I mean, if there's something that we can do to help, we certainly point you in the right direction, but again, being outside the village limits, we don't have any authority.
Okay, good to know. No, I just didn't know about these details, cause this is what they were just telling me, so I'm just kinda going off of hearsay.
No, sure. Uh...
The only thing I would say is the village would not have had any say in that, it would have been just between homeowners and tollway authority.
Okay, yeah, cause they, they told me the village, so I just got kinda confused out of that, so that's why I came in.
But I appreciate that.
If you want to take my car out, will you touch with somebody in the tollway authority? Right, appreciate it.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to stay, but if you, if that was your purpose of coming, you can...
I'll stick around, cause...
Why not?
I got some time to kill.
We can tell everybody after their portion of the meeting that they can make the break to happen, so they don't have to watch. Appreciate it. More than welcome to stay. All right, who else is up to speak?
Uh, Eric Bauer.
I actually am not here to speak, I just signed in, I thought everyone was signing in.
Oh, okay.
That's awesome.
We make you speak.
Yes. Now that I'm gonna figure you may have talked, so...
Right.
Okay, before you have the minutes from March 17, 2022, please review them at this time, and let us know if there's any corrections that you can see, or spelling errors or anything like that.
I have one.
Okay.
I think I haven't got one, thank you. Um, on page four, um, write it for the first motion trustee Paul Strini to award the water system connection, and I didn't think it was me that was gonna award it. Um, so if we could add moved right after Paul Strini.
Actually, I thought that was part of the...
That I was gonna pay for too. Let's have me move then.
Yes.
Hi, page three in public comments, I believe the surname of our speaker is in... It's spelled with an E and T one. I'm kind of...
Uh, we've been looking through... Okay, it is, it's paid, it's, the T's missing.
Okay.
It's pretty solid.
N, A...
A, T, one.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Any other corrections? Any other comments about this meeting, it was a good time. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, but the changes have been recorded.
Ooh.
Thank you. Hey, any questions or comments, this is the last chance. Your third, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Bover.
Hi.
Motion's passed six zero. With that, I turn it over to Mr. Hedges, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, and good evening all of you. First on our agenda tonight, I would ask for consideration of a resolution approving a committee, community investment settlement agreement with Dakota Minnesota and Eastern Railroad subsidiary of Canadian Pacific Railroad Company. Uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could just comment for a minute or two of, of the history of this. Um, the village board has received at least two briefings from me by email, including one this week, and trustee, trustee Paul Strini and uh, Reed and myself, I met with the representatives from um, from, from Canadian Pacific, and we have representatives with us tonight, so I'd like to introduce Ariel Gerdano, who's the government relations head for uh, for that company, and also Larry Lloyd, who will be open in office in Chicago, government relations in Chicago soon. Uh, so he'll be a future member of our community. And uh, Ariel came in tonight from DC to be here for this tonight. Um, so what we have before you tonight is, is three items, but one motion, only one motion, and that's the resolution. The resolution before you would authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with uh, uh, Dakota Minnesota and Eastern Railroad, which is a short agreement in your packet. It lays out three primary facts, uh, one is the um, uh, that the, that CP will put in a quiet zone. This is something that the mayor's talked about for quite some time, and was hoping to hear the board meeting about before. Um, we initially looked into quiet zone well before this issue came up, and uh, we looked at numbers like $250,000, $300,000, but when uh, when Canadian Pacific came to meet with us, they told us that the cost would be $625,000. Um, and they offered to give us funds to grant, so we put the, the uh, quiet zone in. Um, there was a lot of concern um, that day, as well as subsequent meeting. Um, would, would it have cost overruns, could the village do this, is, is this kind of work that we really wanna do ourselves, so what? We went back to Canadian Pacific and asked them if they would do it themselves at their own expense. So that's what they've agreed to do, and that's what this agreement calls for, so that's step number one. As a requirement to do that, we have to close the East Street Crossing uh, in order to make it a safe zone, or a quiet zone, uh, which is for safety purposes. Um, the third item is that uh, the village asked them, asked the railroad if we could have the gravel area that you're all familiar with, where we like to park, but we're not allowed to park um, on Rin, and they did agree to that as well. So that's in, in this agreement. And uh, in return for that, what the village board has been asked to do is not object um, to the acquisition uh, before the uh, Surface Transportation Board, the Federal Surface Transportation Board right now, which is receiving comments, uh, public comments. Um, and I believe they'll receive comments until about June, is that right?
Um, the, the draft D I S should come out sometime at the end of April.
Okay.
And people can comment on that until September.
Okay, so the comments until September. Um, the acquisition actually did close last December between the two private companies, I, I reported that at the last, the last time we talked about that here. So what you have before you is, are those two documents, and then as well a licensing agreement. The licensing agreement is, is really kind of an awkward document, uh, I think Ariel and I would both apologize for that, and and now Mr. Schuster even has some fingerprints on it now. Um, and Ms., Ms. Paul Strini spent a couple hours with us yesterday going over that document, so that document is in your packet, it's already been amended multiple times since it was distributed to, it's really giving you that just for form. Um, but we have reached agreement on that, on that uh, document as of yesterday and today. And so I'll be discussing that tomorrow with Mark, with Ariel, and we'll probably, if you give me that authority, that's the second thing that you're doing, and the resolution is you're giving me authority to finalize that um, that licensing agreement. So if I haven't confused you so far, the only thing before you right now is the resolution that I just read, and we would ask for your consideration of that. And appreciate your comments, particularly if Ms. Paul Strini has had a little bit, quite a bit of time to review this.
Ms. Paul Strini, you, you have been the closest to this, so why don't you kind of give us your thoughts?
Um, first, I, I'm thrilled that we've been able to have as many conversations as we have, and I also wanna um, to thank the railroad too for its accommodations and for their time to let us know um, and to answer our questions, so that has been phenomenal. I know uh, I, I've just been sharing, I'm fine with all of the things that are agreed to in the resolution. Um, and I said um, asked to have a little bit of time to talk to um, our village manager and our attorney, I didn't ask for the attorney, I got it, that was a bonus, uh, to go over a number of things that I was concerned with in the second document, which we are not voting on today, but I was able to at least kind of express some of the concerns that I had. So uh, that was an hour discussion yesterday, and concerns that I wasn't sure about Mr. Schuster had, and it sounds like those have all been resolved, so...
Or if I could add one more thing, you asked a question today, and I forgot to get back to you. Uh, they have agreed now that we will not have to tear out the parking lot at the end of the lease, if it ever ends, that was your last question, sorry.
Okay. That, that was, if you read through the whole thing, and I know it was long and it was very detailed, um, was that at the end of the use of this, of the property, that we'd have to return it in exactly the same condition as it was, and it just really bothered me to spend all this money on just a parking lot, just a plain concrete or asphalt or whatever it was, and then to rip it up. Um, so, so that was one of the concerns. Um, some of the other things in there, and I don't know, probably just wanna bring it up, um, was timing, and I don't know if you could go into some of the timing concerns as to when you get availability for parts of the project?
Yes, so, so first of all, I, I wanna emphasize that the, the agreement, the community investment settlement agreement, not the licensing, let's put the parking lot aside for a minute. Uh, the agreement does not go into effect until that the um, Surface Transportation Board actually approves their project. So if for some reason that project gets denied, then that, that quiet zone, our, our agreement and the agreement that make it to other communities will not be valid. That's, that's in this agreement. Um, so that's all conditional on that being approved. Um, if it doesn't get approved, then we're right back where we were before this all started. Um, in addition to that, there was concern that we want, we would like to go ahead with the parking lot right away, cause we have street scape created in May, and we'd like to have it really paid before then, so they have agreed that the lease, the lease is independent. If for some reason the acquisition does not go through, we still are able to lease the parking lot for $1 a year. Um, and uh, and, and we have, I don't know if I included it in there, but we estimate the cost, we have an estimated cost to pay it for about $23,000. Uh, that'll include bumpers and a fence in front of it to protect cars from trains and all that.
And then we, um, how much, there was what, 16 spaces, 14 spaces?
Twenty spaces, and there'll be X, Y, U, like I'm explaining, there'll be extra deep spaces.
So right now, one of the struggles that we have in, in downtown, um, is that there are a lot of people in this town, myself included, just, you know, for the record, that have large vehicles, whether it be Suburbans, Tahos, you know, pickup trucks with caps and that kind of stuff, or long bed pickup trucks. And this is a part of our community, and there's nowhere for them to park. If you, I took a bunch of pictures of my truck parked out on State Street, okay, today, tonight, and it sticks out. Um, and I intend to use, I, I will intend to use that when we go on our campaign, when we redo downtown about why we're restricting parking. But that being said, with this redoing State Street, we're gonna be losing five spaces, right, because one side's gonna be parallel. Now we're gaining, we're gaining with 20 spaces over there, so we're actually adding 15 downtown through the course of this project, and it will be that the spaces down there are wide enough and long enough, they're gonna be 24 feet deep, so that people with larger vehicles can park there and still be able to walk downtown.
We will need that, because with the street scape program, trucks and SUVs are prohibited from parking in that area.
Well, oversized vehicles, I don't know about all SUVs, but I think there's gonna be a length requirement, is that how that works typically, chief, like with oversized restrictions?
Uh, we tried to find definitions in the IBC some time ago, and it's very difficult to...
So with, with the amount of trucks that everyone has in this town, you won't be allowed to park in that, in that street scape area with a pickup truck or an SUV. So the police department will have to go by tape measures, so they can go and, and pull a tape on an SUV
Like the chain...
Before they write them a ticket.
Like the chain gang in the football game?
I think they might paint the back end of that line, hopefully, if we can find the authorities to do that.
So, like I said, I, I think that that's a...
Not moving forward.
It, it depended on this resolution, that's something that we've all talked about at the board level for a long time, about having to, being able to park there, and now with the vehicles getting bigger and bigger, I think that's a big step for, a big window, I hear you mean.
But I don't wanna lose uh, sight of the fact that the rail jacket is safety, and that's what Mike's been concerned about with the railroad crossing. We're also, they've also agreed to add a pedestrian crossing, which is important given our concrete days and other reasons people walk north. So there'll be a, a pedestrian crossing as well.
Yeah, and so the, people will ask, why are we abandoning that crossing? At the current time, there's no crossing bars that come down for the train at all. And one of the requirements for the uh, quiet zone is that there will be four crossing gates, one on each lane, going in each direction, on either side of the railroad crossing at the current time, so instead of the two gates that come down, there're gonna be four that come down so that nobody can get through. Okay, and so, and, and, and instead of putting the gates down at that second crossing, we're just gonna abandon it before something happens. So, and then the positive would be is that there's no wayside horns or any of that kind of stuff, they just don't blow their horn when they come through town. So we'll hear the noise of the train, you might hear the horns from Briar Hill, but because it's an established quiet zone, and there's no way for people to get across the tracks, because there's cross, there's gates that come down on all four lanes, um, that, that trains do not blow their horns coming through town, which again is a big, which is a big victory for us, because there's a lot of residential as they come through that direction generally, right up against the tracks. What does abandoning cross, uh, crossing look like at east, what does that entail? Digging up the road, putting a fence up? So that's gonna, to my understanding, right, that's parking, that's gonna...
No, initially that will be done by, by Canadian Pacific, Canada, Canadian Pacific, they will do the the blockage that they need to do, and then we, we've discussed just briefly about potentially abandoning East Street to the north, because it's been up through the street there. Uh, so we haven't really, we don't have any firm plans on how to handle that yet.
Okay.
We'll wait and see what the intersection looks like once uh, Canadian Pacific blocks it.
But there's gonna be, to, to be clear, for the interest of safety, there's gonna be barricades or something that's going to stop people from being able to cross there.
It barriers, I'm saying, permanent barriers, okay. You don't know what place.
Well, I can discuss what...
Yeah, Ariel can speak briefly to what that blockage might look like, go ahead.
Yeah, so you would pull the crossing out itself, you would remove the approaches up to the crossing, and then you put like guardrails and so the road doesn't approach to it anymore, so people don't drive over them as much as crossing. I don't know how long that portion takes, but typically, full crossings out.
We're really good.
Do you have a question now?
I do, actually, what does the pedestrian crossing look like then, since there will no longer be the horn, and we've got the gates coming down, is the pedestrian crossing?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I can't really speak to that, we haven't seen the engineering yet. Can you, can you just speak to that?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the exact engineering report will look like, but the pedestrian walkways will be protected by the crossing devices. That's a part of the quiet zone, upgrade those four quad gates, protect the walkway. Sometimes there're separate pedestrian gates that come down, but they're, that walkway will be protected by some form of those gates.
And, and those gates, when they come down, you're still gonna hear the digging of the bell.
Yeah.
You're just not gonna hear the train horns, or like in Alburn or DeKalb, they have separate blowhorns that are on posts that blow towards traffic. It's not needed in this case, because the, the intersection is completely gated off.
Okay.
They just lights and a bell. Lights and a bell.
Okay. So there will still be some auditory warning in addition to the...
And visual as well.
The giant...
Yeah, with flash, with flash and lights. So... Yeah, so...
One more clarification just as to when then, we have, uh, for the East Street closure of the train then, that will not be done then until the agreement is reached with the railroads, the merger?
So um, the Surface Transportation Board has to approve our acquisition of KCS, which we currently expect the timing to be at sometime at the end of this year, uh, December, end of November, December. Once the Surface Transportation Board approves our acquisition, that's when this clock will start on us doing the work on the quiet zone, which will remain, remain, I'm sorry, will include pulling out the one crossing, upgrading the same device on the other, applying for the quiet zone at the FRA, all that work. So the clock will start once we have a...
I have another question if I may. As far as, just so that, there's a lot of talk from our community, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but there's a lot of talk in our community and, and communities around us, that communities, such as our small communities that are impacted by this merger, should stand up and fight this. Okay, that's been, that's a, that's a common thing that's gone on, we've read about it in the paper. This is a, a big merger, and can you, it's already been approved in Mexico, correct? And it's already been approved in Canada as well, correct, or almost there?
There's no uh, Kane approval, no Kane approval that was required, but there's no objections.
Okay, so just to put it in perspective, for anybody that says that we as a village board should fight the Canadian Pacific over this, because of the impact that it's going to have on our community, right? We're one village of 7,600 people, and this is a, uh, this is a deal that's going to impact three countries. So it's just, it's important, I just wanted to, I asked you that question just to put it in perspective, so that we, you know, if there is an impact to our community, right, there's no doubt about that, but I think that this is a great, I think that this is a great solution. I think that, I mean, some of the issues that we had longstanding with the railroad in its current form are addressed, and um, you know, I think with the more, with more impact of the trains, I think it'll be a better solution, so thank you for that information. Does anyone else have any questions about this, or to the Canadian Pacific staff that's here?
If I could jump on just what you said too, I mean, Canadian Pacific has come out now twice to sit and meet with us, answer our questions, you know, not even going into the probably hundreds of phone calls that have gone back and forth, and we might, you know, clarifying things, so um, they have been great to work with, and it's very much appreciated, because as you said, we're a small community of 7,600, and this is a huge railroad. Um, so to get something that would benefit the community, this is going to take place, and I think we're pretty happy with what we've gotten.
Sure. The quiet zone thing is something that I had talked to Mr. Hedges about pretty quick after I got into office, because I saw that in Alburn, they don't, they don't blow the horns, goes right through their downtown. And Mr. Hedges and Mr. Ray looked into it, and it was a very, very, very expensive proposition. And there's a huge approval process that's to go through with the federal government, for the quiet zone application, and all this other stuff, so it's important to know some of those details. So I have one more question.
On the uh, timing of the quiet zone construction after the STB approves this, I believe it was within two years of the approval, or three?
Three years total.
Or two years from the...
Approval date from the current...
Right.
The quiet zone.
Do we have an, or do you have an estimated uh, traffic flow increase, or estimation on traffic will increase during that time before the quiet zone comes in? To understand the increase in train traffic that will come before it's done?
Yeah, so the, the train traffic increase will occur over a three-year period of time incrementally, so it'll slowly grow over that three years. The three-year timeline, it's, we haven't said, so it's two years from approval of the quiet zone by the FRA, or three years total. So it could be significantly shorter than both, we just can't control how quickly the FRA moves on the approval process for quiet zone. Um, but that traffic growth is gonna be incremental over that period of time, so it's not flipping a switch.
And so there will be a period of time, possibly up to two years or more, where there will be significantly more trains coming through before that quiet zone across it, potentially?
It, it, possibly, but it's gonna be a slow growth, so I'm not sure if it'll be significant as a, I would, I wouldn't...
Uh, yeah, not turning on at once, but if, we would see an increase over time. Um, to Mr. Hedges, the area on Rin that we're looking at creating a parking lot is currently where the downtown State Street snow is usually piled up in the winter, where is that snow trying to go?
I haven't talked to Dave about that yet, they'll find another place. There's nothing else, they can just go through the west, there's a lot of rain.
Well, and they've put it there, cause they can push it, they're not leaving a, a dump truck, a dump gate there, so we're now looking at potentially need to actually physically...
Yeah, I haven't spoken to Dave about that, but he's been real involved in this, he's kept the boards on the asphalt, and so he's well aware of it, so I'm sure he, he has a plan in mind, but I'm asking that.
And then my final question is, uh, am I correct in understanding what you said earlier, that the lease agreement, we have in our package, not the most recent lease agreement?
Yes, it's not, and it's not here for your consideration, what we're asking you to do is to vote um, for the resolution which would authorize me to negotiate that lease.
And then once you've negotiated, it would come back to the board for approval?
That would not be the intent, if you prefer that, choose that.
Um, sorry, I forgot, I do have one more. On the lease? Timeframe on the lease, the initial timeframe is a five-year lease, $1 per year, after that point it can be terminated from the ESR. Do you see that?
Right, yes, whatever.
It's my Canadian, so it can be terminated at that, at that time, uh, is there a reason why we've limited it to five years, is it, is there any reason why we're not looking at a, I mean, we're not going anywhere, I would hope, we're not looking at...
I misspeak, because the attorneys have been talking today, but I believe that we agreed on mutual, they have to require mutual consent to cancel after five years, otherwise it will automatically be new for consecutive five years.
Okay, cause I did not see, unless it's in the edit, I did not see it.
That's a change that's been discussed, and I don't think it's in the version that you had in front of you.
That's why I was asking the question, cause there was no mutual consent, five years without mutual consent.
The first five years cannot be terminated.
Correct.
And the, the mutually consent part is like if the city stops us from accessing emergency, you know, something, doing an emergency, anything like that, so it has to mutually agree upon, unless it's terminated, I don't know, so I have any...
Thank you.
This is Trevor, I have a question.
Sure. The chief Herman is on the, on the big TV, the man behind the curtain.
Mm-hmm.
Welcome Chief Herman.
Thank you. Um, historically, has there been an issue with those gates getting stuck? And, and what concerns me with the four gates, there's no way in the elimination of the East Street, there's no way for us to get out if those get stuck. And that, historically, that has happened with, with the current gates. So has there been a history of that?
Not to my knowledge, but not to my knowledge, um...
TH on the board.
The current, the current gates get stuck, so you can go over to the other one to...
Yeah.
That's correct.
Well, this is the fire chief. That's a fire.
I understand, yeah. I, I don't know how old those gates are, but the new devices that are put in upgrades all the signals, you have new, you'll have new signals there, new gates, we have ability to see if they're stuck and why they're stuck, so if that's the case, we do have a community connect hotline, and then on the crossing, there is a sign that has a phone number to CP police, which is 24/7, 6, 365 days a year, if those gates come down and get stuck and you call CP police, we'll be able to either send somebody out or see why they're stuck and pull them up if there's no train coming. There's an emergency phone number.
Is it remotely released them when we're sitting there with a fire engine trying to get across?
I don't know the, I don't know if I can find, I could find out.
Wait, sir. I think that's... Can you actually push them back up? I mean, is one still here, you can hold those up, for the... Yeah. And tension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so that, that, that was more of my question, so the gates do get stuck, how do we get the emergency vehicles to...
I'd suggest this, I, I'd like to get some instructions from there, we've been very involved with their public works people and their engineering department. I don't really want any conversation here to be misunderstood, to have somebody go out and try and lift up a gate, that's not a good idea.
Don't do that, no.
What, what we'll do for Chief Herman is, chief, I'll put you in touch with their safety people, and we'll get some specific instructions on what you should do in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't heard that being before, I've been with the company for four years and haven't heard the scenarios, so...
We don't wanna be the first.
Yeah, I'd like for that to not happen.
I, I think that, I'm sure they have safety procedures in place of what we should do then, and I, I would presume it doesn't mean driving somebody down from Minneapolis.
No, no.
And, and, yeah. Good. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I have just one, if I can ask. Um, is there a speed requirement with this quiet zone?
For the train?
Yeah.
For the train?
Actually, we learned a little bit, we did learn that the trains go at a...
It's 45 miles an hour tops in this area.
Yeah, pretty low, but there is no slowdown requirement for...
No, but there's a limit as far as how fast they can travel the section of rails to get here, because of the curvature of the tracks, I think they were saying, so the, the very fastest they could go through this area, it, it, like, the, the engineers know, because otherwise there'll be problems when they go around the curve.
No, I understand that, I was just curious if...
There, there are speed laws that have to follow based on the way the tracks are laid out, we also have a, uh, something called a positive train control system that is able to link into what speed limit is, if a, uh, conductor is heading into a speed limit zone that's, and going too fast, the train will actually slow down.
Right. I was just curious, if you have to slow down.
No, it's great.
Okay. He owns a lot of land on the road.
Oh, but you don't want them to slow down, but good.
I own my own railroad too.
Uh, sorry, Chief Herman just got me thinking, that's he just saying those things, uh, asking his questions, is there a a time requirement of the, of this being approved in this meeting versus a subsequent meeting, I know that every parties have come to agreement, we're gonna have to do the license at another agreement, or, or we give you the power to do that, so is there a reason we're voting on it tonight?
And the reason we would prefer to is so that we could get that parking lot paid before street scape construction starts May 1st.
Also, discussions that we had had in the meeting a couple weeks ago, time-wise, we had asked when they would be kind of responses back, and by the end of April is what they were looking for, which is why it's being brought, I think, today to this meeting.
That's an accurate statement. That's, yeah, Canadian Pacific asked for that, and we'll be personate with them on the app.
So we still had time then to kind of go over the lease agreement, et cetera, but we will be allowed to do it immediately after we approve the resolution today, we can move forward with that. Of course, it will not happen then, um, until our village manager comes to terms with it and signs it. If we give him that authority this evening, so that we can begin it before street scape and have plenty of time to do it. Personally, after spending a lot of time going through a lot of... Personally, after spending a lot of time going through a lot of nitty gritty details, taking them page by page with comments. Is it possible to get maybe a redlined version of the changes from this one to the other one?
Sure.
Just because I know there were some issues. I mean, for me, for one thing was it's it's a dollar per year, but then it can be increased after five, and what does that mean? Ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, I know perpetuity, one dollar.
Perpetuity, okay, so that's a change from yesterday's conversation to today, so some of those things, and I know there's a lot in there about property taxes as well and, um.
That's also been resolved.
Yeah.
The railroad doesn't pay property taxes.
So that's all those things that has all been removed. So a lot of that stuff kind of will be, whether it's pulled out or not, um, we did get answers to, so. Um, but if if everybody could have that red line version so that it can clarify things, that would be great, um, even if you give it a. Timestamp where you'd like to have it within forty eight hours back, any comments that are given to you. I mean, I I don't pay the forty eight hours. I don't know. I know that's quick, but I know what we also do want to start.
It's also negotiation, right? It's also we often want to be mindful of that.
Right.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, this is more, I guess, a budget question. Did we budget to pay? Did we include that in our budget?
It will be our budget. It will be addressed tonight, yes.
Okay. I couldn't. I was looking.
The twenty forty grand in the lot?
Laura, speak that to the, as you know, from the budget committee, we said there will be a few minor changes before I get to the board and Laura will address those notes.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, or discussion about the resolution in front of you?
Uh, I have one last question. Uh, for Chief Thompson and Chief Harmon, based on the conversation this evening. If they're going to get back to you on some of the specifics of how emergency vehicles would potentially get through. Do you have any concerns about this moving forward tonight?
That's how I see with the the emergency conditions to bypass the stuck gates. You know, I'm I'm good with it.
Yeah, same for me.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you for being here tonight, Chief Herman.
Welcome.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty two dash two. A community investment settlement agreement with the Canadian Pacific Railway Company.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Deputy Kirk, can you call the board please?
Mr. Coach, we're voting on what I have in my hand, correct? No rest, I ain't no change, no.
Just the resolution.
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Let's pass six zero. All right, fantastic. Thank you so much for all of your work. Jay, uh, Trusty Paul Strini. Representatives Canadian Pacific, thank you for coming all the way from, uh, Washington, I suppose. Hopefully you didn't make the trip just for this meeting.
I tried to do a couple of things at the same time, but I planned around it.
And with that, you're you're free to go. You can stay and watch the show if you'd like.
Please hit dinner in town while you're here. Do you need a car? Just kidding.
All right, so now we need to open the public hearing. Okay, I now I'm going to open the public hearing at seven thirty four regarding our twenty twenty three annual budgets. Mr. Hedges or Ms. Lyons?
Ms. Lyons will speak as soon as she gets her screen. Jared? You have to do something or get her to tell you her screen. Yep, she's got it. It takes a minute.
I didn't know if he had the magic light switch over here. We we called an article. He had to be the first to that.
It should be purple. All right.
All right. Can you dim the first row of lights if that's okay? And then members of the audience, if you want to move your chairs around so you can see for the presentation, you're welcome to do so. All the way over here with the light against the wall.
People have pulled the chairs right out into the middle.
Doesn't matter though. Ms. Lyons, sorry.
All right, um, okay, uh. Thank you very much and welcome to the budget hearing for the twenty twenty two, twenty two, twenty three fiscal year budget. Um, overall, our overriding goal this year, as it always is, is the delivery of essential village services. That includes police protection. Maintenance of streets, although we kind of hope we're out of this particular phase. Um. For the providing of a clean and abundant water supply. Um, the treatment of wastewater. And our trash collection and recycling services. Since, um, since our last meeting three weeks ago, there have been some adjustments that have been made to the budget. As Jay said, um, we have included. Uh, the paving of the lots down on Rin as well as, um. Including. Ones for the monument signs, uh, that will all now match the new monument sign that is at the corner of French and seventy two. And also some village holographics, um, to be placed out front of the building. We have done, um, in the police department, a reclassification from equipment to training. Um, as we expect to potentially send a candidate to the police academy this fiscal year. In the streets, we've, um, added an additional two thousand dollars for updating the safety equipments. And we have done some adjustments in the utility department for wages after filling a vacant position. And that required not only some changes in the water and sewer departments. But also in the street department to account for overtime wages and the associated expenses for snowplow that are done by our utility workers. Um, and then, uh, in the general fund, I attended a seminar recently. Um, that was put on by the U S Treasury to talk about our state and local, um. Uh, relief funds that we're getting through ARPA. And, um, there, uh, the overwhelming, uh. Take on that whole seminar was that, um, the fastest and easiest, both for the village and for the U S Treasury. Is to record all of the grant funds in the general fund, um, as lost revenue. And the village really didn't experience a large amount of lost revenue during the pandemic. However. Um, there is a ten million dollar standard allowance. And if if our receipts are under ten million dollars, we can automatically use, um. Income loss as our, uh, our reason for claiming the funds, so we will be doing that. And all of those funds. Um, now show with the exception of ones that we're going to use this fiscal year. The remaining amount of, um, ARPA funds are now showing in the general fund and then being transferred out to project funds. Um, to take care of the water, uh, sorry, the intersection improvements down. At state and seventy two, as well as the north and south water. We've done some updating for, uh, revenue for our tax funds as we now have our extensions. And, um, we I updated the road and bridge fund with the actual expenses to be incurred, um, in repaving Centennial. We will be using, um, some reserves in the road and bridge fund as the expenses will exceed the revenue that's received in this particular fiscal year. So now with respect to the general fund, I just kind of thought I would show you a little bit of how we've been doing in this particular situation. So in the twenty twenty three budget, the last column, um, shows what our fund balance is expected to start at. Uh, our revenue, expenses, other sources of funding and uses, those uses are net of transfers, so. Um, the transfers out of. The general fund to pay for some of those expenses that I just talked about, net of expenses or transfers coming in. In the form of transportation funds to help fund, um, our capital projects. That follow, um, there. And I wanted to just, it's kind of a, a nice point of reference, but. Um, I've been working on Village of Hampshire audits since the fiscal year two thousand and ten audit. And, um, at four thirty two thousand fourteen, which was after the Great Recession. Our fund balance was sixty thousand ninety eight dollars. That's two percent of the budget expenses that particular year. This year, with the ending fund balance projected at one million eight hundred thousand, that's thirty three percent, so we've, um. Come a long way since this time. I thought I'd, uh, tell you about the general fund revenues. As you know, we are now receiving, uh, state share revenues on. The increased census numbers, so state share revenues now make up forty one percent of our general fund revenues. Property taxes are still a large percentage at twenty percent. Um, and then this, uh, lays out the other amounts, fourteen percent in grants this particular year, which is much greater than normal because of those ARPA funds. And then, um, licenses and permits at six percent, charges for services at five. Uh, utility taxes, which are the taxes you pay, um. Tonight, well, to Nycor and to come and to come back to the village and then eight percent of other income. This is one of my favorite graphics and I'm going to have to get away from it. I don't see it all the time.
No, I love it. No, you can't. You can't give that up.
I I figured out how to grab this, so. Um, the village receives six cents for every dollar you pay in property taxes. Um, as far as general fund expenditures, sixty four percent are, um, to pay for wages and benefits. Uh, twenty one percent for contractual services, four percent for commodities and other expenses. And then capital outlay and debt services, approximately seven percent of the expenses in the general fund. And then to look at it from, um. Kind of a departmental, uh, perspective. Fifty one percent of the expenses in the general fund are for police protection and their associated, um, expenses. Twenty three percent for street maintenance, twenty five percent for admin and finance, and one percent for governance. There was some concern expressed at our last meeting regarding the changes in the utility rates. Um, they are scheduled to increase four point one percent, so I just wanted to provide you with a calculator to illustrate, uh, how this. Um, could affect the average family residence, um, here in Hampshire. So they say the average household size in Illinois is three individuals. And an average person uses sixty gallons of water per day. Hampshire's billing cycle is every other month, as you know, and so that's approximately sixty days in length. So three people times sixty gallons of water per day, times sixty days in a billing cycle. Is ten thousand eight hundred gallons of water used per billing cycle. So just for illustrative purposes, um, we do bill by the thousand gallons, so, um, let's look at eleven thousand gallons.
I thought it was going to be a really funny graph.
I have some good statistics, uh, you know, a gallon of water is sixteen thousand glasses of water, so. That's going to cost you forty seven cents more. So currently our water charges are five dollars and six cents per thousand gallons. Um, and, uh, that's scheduled to increase to five dollars and twenty seven cents. Sewer is also based on the number of gallons used currently at six dollars and thirty one cents per one thousand gallons. That will move to six dollars and fifty seven cents. And then our garbage, uh, goes up contractually starting July one as well from forty one dollars and ninety cents. These are non senior rates. Um, to forty two dollars and seventy cents. So at eleven thousand gallons of water in a billing cycle. The, uh, resident would be paying one hundred sixty seven dollars and ninety seven cents today. And one hundred and seventy three dollars and ninety four cents when the rates, um, increase. That's an increase of five dollars and ninety seven cents for about three dollars a month.
We're going to need that, uh, PowerPoint slide, um, on July second.
Okay.
Every one of us is going to need to have it in our favorites.
Sure. Um, and then just to give you an overall review again of, um, some of the capital projects and special revenue funds, uh, projects that we're going to incur this year. Um, because it's my favorite and pet project, uh, I put E R P software at the beginning. Um, we'll hopefully, uh, be bringing you some information on the cost of that. Uh, very, very soon and then get started on implementing different pieces of the software right away. Um, we will be connecting the north and south water systems, the intersection improvements at state and Route seventy two will happen this summer. Uh, funding for Coon Creek Country Days and Hampshire Chamber stay at the, uh, levels that they requested. Uh, we will be repaving Centennial Drive, as I mentioned. We will be doing some street striping and crack sealing. We will be continuing our search suppression initiatives at both water and sewer facilities. Um, enhancing the skater communications systems, which has already started to take place. We will be doing some lift station, uh, pump rehabs. We were replacing six fire hydrants in the village, so we, um, budget for six each year. And then, uh, we will continue the improvements in the S S A detention retention areas. Um, we will also be training in all areas of the village and acquiring a wheel loader, uh, two trucks, a gator, and. Um, the timing is a little bit, uh. Uh, pending at this point, but, uh, all in all, between now and, um. Soon, I guess you could say, we'll be acquiring five different squads.
I'll do it, thank you. Sure.
Um, so that's all I have for you this evening. Um, if you have any questions, I would, um. Uh, yes.
Where did the twenty three thousand come out of for that lot down there?
So what we did was, um, we we rearranged, um, it did not come out of anywhere. It was added to the budget. So we increased the transportation, uh, transfer that's being made for that purpose.
Transportation as in the motorfield tax?
No. Transportation fund is a separate fund for motorfield tax that is, um. Uh, monies that are received from residential, uh. Building companies. Um, certain, and I I will tell you that this needs to have a correction before the budget is, um, finalized. It's on page.
You got to open it. This is relevant.
I made a script earlier, like, I believe. Um, the twenty, I actually put in it at twenty five thousand dollars because, um. Uh, to allow for some extras, uh, just in case the base needs to be adjusted or something. Um, it's on page six of the budget. Oh, budget page six. And it's in capital outlay, zero one.
Page thirty eight here.
Yes, sorry, I don't have one page.
Twenty five on that one, already said, funded for a little more. The twenty three thousand is for paving, correct?
Yes.
Because there's also in that agreement a fence that needs to be put up.
That's why we rounded it up to twenty five.
So that should cover both of those?
Yes.
And then, um. Yeah. Any other questions?
This might be a silly one, but you said we replaced six fire hydrants per year. How many fire hydrants do we have in the world?
No, I actually do know that, um.
I figured you might.
That was in our newsletter. That was.
No, I know I had it. I I really thought it was like four hundred.
How many?
Yeah.
It has to be very close to eight hundred.
Yeah.
It was all through the hydrant flag program we did. That's kind of how I know that number.
What what is the life of a fire hydrant?
There are, there are some very, very old, I mean, Chief Herman can talk about that as well. There are some very old, um. Fire hydrants currently.
So I guess what I'm getting at is six per year enough?
Um, it, so we identify each year some that, um. Are not functioning, you know, to the expectations that we would like, but yes, um, we believe that's a a good schedule.
Okay.
You know, hundred and twenty years you have.
You also have to figure like how many, how many fire hydrants do we have in our town within the last twenty years? I mean, I can't, I don't know that figure. I would bet, I would bet it's substantial. There's, you know, a lot of.
Ben Listerton's property out in the quarter.
Okay, any other questions about Ms. Lyons' presentation? Or the budget? Or how she has all those skills cutting up the dollar bill? You didn't use an actual dollar bill.
Um, well, I photographed the dollar bill and I forget.
I hope that she wouldn't, she wouldn't say that. Okay.
I don't have a question. Let me be, be hard question to comment before we go.
Sure. Okay. And anybody else have anything, comments, concerns for the public hearing? Does any public, members of the public have anything for the public hearing? Do I need a motion to close the public hearing? Can I motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Deputy Clerk. Mr. Ma. Ms. Paul Street.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson, hi. Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Ms. Kelly.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed at seven fifty-one P M for the minutes.
And Mr. Mayor, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual budget.
Okay, so do you guys want to discuss it first or do you want to? Do you want me to, because I'll entertain a motion to approve. Excuse me? I'll make a motion. I would like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash five. To approve the fiscal year annual budget for the year twenty twenty-three.
So.
I'm first. I get a second please.
Second.
Awesome. Now, questions or comments?
I have, I have a comment or I guess a question too. And I appreciate the Budget Committee putting all the time and effort that goes into this, having served on that for a little bit. I understand just how much goes into your listening. Really appreciate it. So thank you. And to the, to the heads of every department, I'm sure that there were more wish list items than you probably were able to. There's something to your fiscal diligence. I would ask that the board consider removing the increase in the water charge for this fiscal year. With the reconsideration of next year, the four percent increase that we saw in the presentation about. Just for a couple of reasons. One, when, I had asked the question last year. Sorry, in the last meeting about the increase, we went through that there's fifteen million dollars in potential capital. Projects for water that need to happen that were less than what other villages charge for water. There are a lot of reasons that why four percent should be up. And I don't think four percent is gonna break budgets from what we saw in the presentation. But I'm also taking into consideration the fact that we're at record inflation right now for regular household goods. We're at record gas prices. Just adding yet, NiCor gas prices are higher than we see it in our village. Gas bills that we approve and our, okay. To add just one more thing on somebody's plate that is increasing. Without, when we looked at the expenses, really, we're talking of, I think, forty thousand dollar difference. I calculated what I brought up in the last meeting. If this four percent didn't go through. We still have enough in funds to cover the estimated expenses in the water fund that was listed. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't raise in the future, but I would like us to take the year to develop a plan if we have fifteen million dollars. And come up with, what does that, what does that plan to achieve that fifteen million look like? At what points do we need to pay for it? How much? Because at forty thousand dollars to four percent a year increase to pay for it. Twenty dollars in the capital fund isn't going to pay for it. And so I'm just not seeing outside of we normally raise, raise a fiscal reason why it has to be raised this year. Rather than maybe just hitting pause. So I just wanted to bring that to the board and let you know my feeling and my thought.
So with that being said, am I, I'm understanding correctly that we have an ordinance in place outside of the budget process that specifies the yearly raises, right?
Correct. You would, you would have to make a motion to amend that.
So, okay, so if we were to go down this path, how would we amend that ordinance today without that being on the agenda?
You could amend the budget today.
Okay, and just violate, you just violate our own ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
We bring, I bring the increase to the board each year.
Isn't it, isn't it an increase in the ordinance?
It is automatically increased in the, in the ordinance, but I'm pretty sure that the last years I brought it forward.
So, no, my question is, is it? My, my question is, is what's the process in which, I understand amending the budget. But I'm also trying to be cognizant of our own ordinances, understood? And so how would we, how, if we were to go down this path, what's the proper way in which to do this?
Amend the ordinance.
Which is not, which is not on the agenda.
Probably follow it up next meeting.
So break the law and then change the law to fix it? I mean, I. I'm just, I mean, I'm.
We're just here for facts. We're not gonna express opinions.
No, I understand.
I suppose the other alternative is postpone the budget approval to the next meeting. That's going in a lot, a lot of time, correct?
Oh.
Just to be an effect.
Yes, that could be done.
Fiscal year, fiscal year starts May.
It would put additional burden on staff.
I, I wouldn't characterize the first option quite the way you did. But certainly, I think, I follow up with that amendment to the prior ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Mr. Mayor, if I could just add that the, that amount would be about eighty-four thousand dollars.
It's eighty-four, okay.
Between waters.
Water answer. I was only looking at the water increase. So thank you for that. So it's halfway there. Any other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts on Mr. Kelly's thoughts? Direction, do you guys want to go here?
I would go along with it, but I know the fact that the chemicals used to treat the sewage plant are continuously rising. And if, if there's a shortage or some, something they can't get and they gotta pay dearly for it. That'll put us even further in the hole.
Yes.
And that's a really good point. Like down most, the, the cost for the sewage plant, the chemicals are substantial.
I mean, I, to that point, I mean, yes, everything's going up for all of the residents, going up for all of us sitting up here, right? The costs of doing business in general, which is going up as well because we're also in that same market. Right? So, I mean. I don't know. What do you, what's your, what's your guys' feeling? What do you wanna do?
I wasn't asking for something to be done or steering my opinion.
No, so I understand, but we take all of us seriously, right? That's, we've done it for the last year or so, always trying to feel everybody out. Because we have a first and a second, so I can, we can call for a roll right now. We'll call vote. Or we can discuss it further. What do you think?
What if we leave the first and the second?
To the motion.
To the motion. To approve the budget as presented. This is a question.
Okay.
So if, you know.
Someone could call the question because there is a pending motion that's been moved and seconded.
So yours wasn't a motion to amend. It was just.
It was my comment. That's why I said I wasn't asking for something to be done. I was providing feedback on it.
I would really like to ease the burden on the resident as well. Because they're getting hit from every direction. But on the other hand. But Trusty Coth, I mean, that's, that's a great point too.
What would the average be per household then with this? Well, with the change being six dollars for the average family with the eleven thousand gallons. That would be thirty-six dollars a year. So thirty-six dollars and we have six billion dollars.
I guess what's got me thinking now is the garbage contract that Mr. Hens is negotiating last year that we approved. We did save a lot of money. So even though it's, it's going up here. It, no, it came way down.
Right.
So we're, we were. Yeah, I mean, and that increase was insubstantial. So I think we easily came down by transferring over to Flood Brothers.
Yeah, it came down a couple of dollars initially.
For about three years until first. Right. So that increase would still, we'd still be below where we would have been. Well, which was a second one.
Just a thought, you know, we don't know if the four percent, maybe there's room for a lesser amount than four percent, one percent. Is that an option that would be more favorable? Because as Tony told me, we said we have increases. We don't know what the cost you're involved with the increases. So maybe there's ground in between the four percent.
Maybe this is our wake-up call, right? Or for like better terminology, maybe we'd come up with a plan for subsequent years to address this once, maybe quote-unquote, once and for all, right? And to your point, we're raising the right, raise of water, right? And we still have fifteen million dollars in capital charges. To your, to your, I think you're, I don't want to take you out of context, but your, that quote was the twenty dollars in capital charges is a cutment. And raises, the four percent raises in the water bill wasn't not cutment. So let's figure out what's going to, like, how do we get out of it?
So my, my point was that this four percent isn't going to do that. It's not to fund that capital. I think what, in this discussion, and I'm very glad we were able to have this, the points that Trusty Robinson said about. The current monthly fee is significantly less than where it would have been had we not made some choices. And Trusty Coth about the, the chemicals and the, the just raw materials to treat the water, to treat the sewer going up as well. We're a very good point. So, you know, then, then I think to, to what you were saying. It, it is a, the four percent is to cover the increased costs of the village may have. Still, the resident out of pocket isn't more than it would have been before. But we still do, to your point, we still do need to start actually putting together a project plan with yearly funding of, if we have this coming. Four percent's not gonna do it. Twenty dollars isn't gonna do it. Then we need to either look at. Potential grant on whatever. Maybe it depends on how the infrastructure build that has access. You know, there's lots of things that we should. Thank you to Trusty Coth and Trusty Robinson first. Oh, it's gonna go higher because the solids that get hauled off, cost of fuel has gone up. So them truckers are gonna charge them more. And I'm sure at the other end, a lot of them dump it in the farm fields, but some of it can be. And that's why I raised the question is so we can have that discussion to talk about what are all the things and reasons why we would increase the rate? Because at face value, it doesn't feel right to me, but when we talk through a lot of this, I can start to see the justification.
Just because we just received a, a, an update in that, that hauling is about two dollars or roughly ten percent. We're negotiating now, but that's what they came up with initially. No. Mr. Mayor, I, if I could just make one comment, it seems like you've kind of wound down. I won't interrupt you, buddy. Trusty Kelly, you're absolutely right. I committed to you two years ago that I would bring you a capital plan. And a, and a plan, a long-term plan for funding all the list services, particularly the water and sewer infrastructure. And we do have a capital plan now. This is our second year. We have a capital budget. And as you pointed out, a year from now, we will have a really good plan. An evaluation of all of our facilities and the plans before, as well as a rate recommendation how to fund this as well. So I would just ask that you give staff one more year to get to that point. An eighty thousand dollar, it would, would be painful for us. We'd have to cut some things. So I would just ask that if you need us one more year to get to that point.
With that, I will ask Mr. Deputy Clerk, if there's no other questions or comments, to call a roll. Are we, are we comfortable calling a roll? Okay, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Ms. Paul Street.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Ma.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero. Thank you very much, Village Board. Thank you very much, Ms. Lyons and the whole Finance Department. And thanks to the Finance, the Budget Committee and again, Mr. Hens.
I'd like to thank the Budget Committee as well. It was very helpful to have your input. And it was not possible to do a budget without the department heads. So thank you.
We'll be meeting tomorrow.
Can we turn the lights on now?
I was kind of enjoying the mood there.
I think we were putting our, our guests asleep in the cheap seats over there. Stretch was sore.
After that little break, I would ask for a motion to approve an engagement with Lauterbach and Amen. LLP for fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit services and TIF compliance. Ms. Lyons and our votes and our voices, so do our guests. Ms. Lyons?
Um, so Lauterbach and Amen is a true partner to the village. They, they are super helpful. I believe that they do a really nice job with our audit. They're very timely to make sure that I stay on track, just now that I am on track. And so with the adoption of a new accounting software. I feel like this is not probably the best year to make a switch. In that they are gonna have to do a lot more work to make sure that everything is lined up properly. So I believe a three-year engagement with them is appropriate. If you are in agreement, I'm asking you to allow us to sign the engagement letter for three years.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lyons about this agreement? They've, they've been a really good partner with us and we're all caught up, correct? With audits and compliance reports and everything. So it's a, a good time. And so to her point, the Finance Department is undertaking a big transition this year with the new ERP. So would that be a good time? I, I also agree to change audit services or. So if there's no further questions about it, I will.
This will be for three years, starting this year?
Correct. Are, are we comfortable with this?
I have two questions.
Sure.
Just for background, have we done a multi-term agreement with them before? We have even one year. Uh, it depends on the particular year and or circumstances, but we have done multiple, multiple years.
Have we done an RFP previous?
Um, we have not done an RFP, a full RFP during my tenure here. I can't speak to before that time. They have done our audit here since two thousand and ten.
I think we talked about this once before. This is a, a really important role for the village. And it's more like a member of the team than it is. They, they bring in auditors and they bring in different groups of auditors. They switch them out all the time. And they also have a Chinese wall between their consulting services and their audit services. So really reputable company that's done a really good job for us.
Can I ask too, the, the amount is listed in the table as twenty-eight-two for this year. And it says twenty-six-seven in the last paragraph. Oh, um, let me double check that. Sorry. It's okay, because then I was trying to go back and subtract the three thousand dollars for the single audit. That would be in the credit. That would be in addition to. Yes, it would. It should, the bottom paragraph should say twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. I don't believe that we will require a single audit this year, but next year we will. It just crossed us on. Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the engagement with Lauterbach and Amen. So. Second.
Could be edited.
Could be the death order.
Twenty, probably something twenty-eight-two.
Okay, first and second, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fuller.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Coth.
Hi.
Ms. Ma.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask now for your consideration of an ordinance waiting section nine oh three point two of the two thousand and six International Building Code. To allow for construction and use of a building without operational automatic fire suppression system for two years at the Midwest Companies site. Mr. Burgland is here to represent Midwest Companies. He's requested this. Trevor, Chief Herman is online. He's also been consulting on this. And Jeff Ray, our acting village clerk tonight, has been handling this as well. So, Mr. Burgland, if you'd like to make any comments, please include.
Well, it's purely a function of, we're not gonna have water in sewer cars site for two years. And the system for sourcing that water to the building is extremely expensive. And would be obsolete once we do get the water there. And then there's a little bit of question whether in a building like that with a fabric roof, it really makes that much difference anyway. So I mean, it's, it's. So, I mean, it's, it's, we need the building codes, but it's, it's a little bit, um, questionable from what I've been consulted to that it would even work.
So, Steve, if I could just, uh, might add the two pounds to the board, um, there are conditions, as you see in your packet, uh, this system will be installed, it just won't be activated, and there will be a full alarm system installed that's required.
Does any, go ahead.
So it'll just be, it'll be ready to go as soon as it's taken down.
Right. Mr. Burglin.
With public water, yes.
And you might share with the board how you plan to get twenty-four to your property.
Uh, be more specific with, with me on this.
Mr. Burglin is kind of forward, is considering at least engineering the extension of water and sewer lines to his property at his own expense with a recapture agreement with future well. He's in the process of engineering that now. It's probably a two and a half to three million dollar investment.
So we're looking at that, we've already gotten preliminary approval from the landowners that we need to cross and, um, eat the water anyway, and we're, uh, working on the planning stages, engineering of, of that system, so.
And the alternative would be to dig up a regular well now?
Yeah. We'll have to have a well, I mean, just for our water for the tiny, but that's relatively inexpensive, so.
Does anyone have any questions about this or to Mr. Burglin?
Just, uh, some of the verbiage.
Okay.
Some of the verbiage in the ordinance and, uh, uh, again, uh, is, I just want to clarify for my edification, you are putting in the system when the building gets built during that construction phase, it's just not going to be hooked up?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
You, you think somebody's having, uh, like a reserve tank in the pump and everything to feed that?
Yes.
What, what, was it about a hundred fifty?
Yeah, pipes in the street.
No, that'll be installed.
That's what I'm saying, all of that would be installed with the building, it's just it won't be connected now.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that clear?
It is, thank you. There was some language in here that made it seem as though it would be, it could be an optional until water comes in. And there was somewhere it said it, it's nice conversation that it would happen, so I just wanted to clarify. I appreciate that.
Okay, there you go. Just one other thing, uh, really is no bearing in what we're talking about here, is it a little bit maybe, is we did get our EPA construction approval for the facility, so.
That's right. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash six waiving section nine oh three dot two of the two thousand and six international building code, uh, for construction and use of a building without an automatic fire suppressive system for two years at the Midwest Companies site. With the understanding that the.
So vote.
Thank you.
Second.
What you're thinking of what?
That the system is going to be installed just now and used at the current time.
Okay.
That's my good.
And, and nothing has changed, the chief Herman is still on board with this for temporary, although we still have him on here, so. Chief?
Chief Herman, are you still with us?
Yeah.
I am. All, all my questions were answered, um, the, the full fire alarm system and it's pre-piped ahead of time, that you answered my questions.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely.
And versus and a second, deputy clerk, can you call a roll? Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coke.
Aye.
Mr. Ma.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Those pass six zero.
Mr. Hedges. Thank you. We would ask for a resolution to, for improve, excuse me, improvement under the Illinois Highway Code Route seventy-two State Street project. Now, you have this in your, in your packet, Josh, would you like to speak to this briefly?
Sure. So the project is moving forward, portion of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to split.
You're welcome.
I'm going to talk to him.
The force of the project that is to be funded by the village is going to have a couple of funding sources, one of which is the rebuild Illinois grant that we are receiving from IDOT in the six installments totaling approximately three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We received five of those installments and, uh, so we're going to be asking for those grants to be utilized for our expenses at this point. Uh, Tim got us the IDOT resolution, so if you have questions specific about the resolution, I would ask him to comment.
And, and confused, didn't we apply for these grant funds to pay for the stretch?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this has nothing to do for paying for the project. Tim, can you explain what, what this, uh, this formality is, please?
Uh, yeah, so there's, there's, for the Route seventy-two and State Street, uh, project, uh, there are, you know, the village has their share to pay and there are certain improvements that are eligible to be used, uh, with the rebuild Illinois funds. And so, and I, that requires that this resolution be passed in order to, for the village to use those funds on this project.
This is, okay. When we passed, when we, when, when we had you fund the intersection, we just didn't pass this formality that state requires just to spend those costs.
Does anybody have any questions about this resolution, which is a formality?
Something regarding the similar is, is, are we still going to get our sign down there, uh, across the street, against that park?
So we should have the electric installed to the park as part of this project, correct?
No. What we found out during this project was that, that there was no, that this is not an opportunity to extend the electric.
I thought we, I, wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute, wait, hey, hey, wait, wait.
This is the first time we're hearing this.
Well, we, we discussed it and we spoke to Commonwealth Edison and I said that there, there's nothing to be, there's nothing in this intersection that addresses electric to that site.
I thought we, we were going to pull it from a light pole or something that was already installed or going to be installed at that site.
No, I think that was the assumption here, but we never, we, the board spoke about it, uh, but when, when I spoke to IDOT, they said, there was, excuse me, when I spoke to comment about actually implementing that, no, they said there was nothing to be gained by doing that.
So there's going to be no power there?
No, and if we had asked for your power, but there, then we would have had to pay for it then, or we could pay for it when we put the sign on. So the, the point is there was no damage to putting the power in with, with the light. There was no, uh, economy of scale or no, no reduction in cost for that.
I'm, I'm, Tim, do you agree with that? With the fact that they're going to have that side of the intersection ripped out, uh, and comments working there, how could it not be cost effective to run a power line, uh, in a simple one-inch conduit, if you will, over thirty, forty feet off the right way?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I was not involved with that, uh, discussion that Jay had, but, um, I think that, uh, what I recall is that, you know, the power will be available, uh, for, to access, uh, you know, easily, and it will be there when you want it for the sign, you can get it, uh, from, you could pull it from the improvements that are being installed.
That's a more accurate statement. What he was saying was that there's, the power's already there now and it'll be there after project is finished. So there, there was really no problem getting powered at the site before and it won't be now, and it won't be in the future. And I asked him, should we go ahead and run it now with the bridge and advantage of any reduction in costs? And they said no. And I thought we'd have that discussion here, but.
No, we have not. This is the first I've heard of this.
So how close, uh, so, Mr. Paulson, how accessible is the power to, on that site? Are we talking like ten thousand worth of accessible? Are we talking, what, what, how, how, because anything with comment costs thousands of dollars, so how many thousands of dollars of comment are we going to be spending?
Whatever you have to rip off the stuff that we.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to explain, Tim is not involved in this, so if you want to jump on me, jump all over.
I, I'm not looking to jump on anybody.
I'm getting that impression, um.
No, Mr. Hedges, we're not.
There's additional cost.
I don't like getting sight, sightwinded.
I apologize for that.
When, when from day one, we talked about that sign being over there from the first day this was brought up. Now, they've already started loading trucks down there, they're excavating. Now you're telling us, we're not kidding.
What I'm telling you is there would be, would have been no advantage to having them do it now. Comments said they can do the same thing when we asked them to do it that they could have done today. Now, if you wanted to spend ten thousand dollars to do it then or twenty thousand, whatever it was, I wasn't told that. I was told simply to find out, while they're running the power, power will be made available and there would be no advantage to that. It is available.
So there's power over there?
I can find out tomorrow how much it'll cost.
Okay. I think that would make us all feel better. I think it's a matter of that, okay, so we, we want the ability to put in that sign, okay? And so we've worked with, we've, we're, I, we've worked with, uh, Senator Severson and Representative Keiker, and they've committed dollars toward the sign project, okay? So we already know that that's coming to us from our representatives and Senator. We know that that's coming, that sign's going to be funded, that's, right? That's their word against, their word to God's ears, right? So.
Well, their words to you, I don't know that.
Right? Well, I don't know, you saw the emails, I mean.
Yeah, but that, it's that they would propose a member initiative.
Right.
Certainly, no guarantee that it would.
So that's, that's our funding mechanism at the current time. And as far as the power goes, I was under the assumption that power was going to be there after this was done. And if it's accessible and it's going to be the same cost, it's the same thing.
It is, and I think the misconception was that there would be a, some economy or some reduction in cost if we had it done at the same time, and it turned out not.
Well, we were told for years that there was no power at that site, period.
There's power all over that intersection, you couldn't have stoplights without power.
No, I understand that, but it wasn't anywhere that it, wasn't cost prohibitive for us to get it at that area because this board is at, not this.
And after it's paved and after sidewalks and after curbs and gutters are in.
Right.
Are we going to have to rip a piece of the road up to put a piece of power in for a sign that this village should have had decades ago?
And my answer is no.
So you're going to find out what the process would be for power and let us know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, maybe a dumb question, but, um, we've got signs at one end of seventy-two, we got signs at the other end of seventy-two, and we have a sign with the village, um, Allen and State. So I'm trying to find out why we need another sign.
This is a message board.
This is a digital.
Oh, okay.
Because the chamber sign is coming out, and so this is, you know, the village owning that message board control.
Okay.
Kind of like when we drive into a, huh, lane and you want that digital, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I was thinking we're putting another sign up that says Hampshire. Why are we doing that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hedges, may I, when you find out about the power, can you also try to find out how accessible it's going to be? I mean, is this going to be like, when you see most of the light poles, you see the access panel and so, you know, you can pull it from there? Or if it's going to be something where we're going to have to dig up things that we have just put down? What is involved?
What I'm trying to explain is that we won't have to dig up things that we just put down, that, that's the question I asked them, but I will ask again.
Okay.
And I will find out exactly what will take us.
Okay. Cause I know originally the question was, how much is it going to cost us, but then also, you know, what else is going to be involved in us getting access to that?
That'll be part of the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't I call for a motion on this yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I did? Our first, no, you didn't. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve, uh, resolution twenty-two dash three, uh, for improvement underneath the highway code, um, Route seventy-two and State Street. Um, but first, okay, Mr. Clerk, oh, questions or comments anymore? Sorry. Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coke.
Aye.
Mr. Ma.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Those pass six zero. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we'd ask for your consideration of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Tollway, excuse, sorry, wrong one, a motion to authorize the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four international snowplow dump truck from Rush Truck Center and outfit equipment from Henderson Products for a total of one hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Sorry for my voice, um, or if you could explain the quotes that they're using.
So the timing is, uh, a little unusual here, but, uh, something that used to take sixteen weeks to, sixteen weeks of leave time is now estimated to take sixteen months of leave time. So with the addition of, um, the new subdivisions that the village is expected to be, um, responsible for, as well as, um, kind of cycle in and out our current, uh, snowplows, we're asking you to approve the purchase, or at least ordering, um, it won't be purchased for quite a while yet, um, the ordering of a twenty-twenty-four snowplow.
In sixteen months, should we be buying like two or three of them, just in case?
Well.
This was actually the schedule for that one.
So is this in, in addition to, or are we replacing? I know that you said because we have the new subdivisions, but I just, I know that we have some older ones. What's the oldest one that we still, we have that two thousand and three or six?
Oldest one that we have is the two thousand and three, that's correct.
And is that being replaced, or is this in addition to?
So this one, I, it's going to kind of depend on the timing, right? So, um, as new subdivisions come online, we don't accept the public improvements in the streets until a certain percentage of those, um, homes are finished. And so, um, we definitely, um, have the need for an additional snowplow. I think this one probably will be in addition to, at least temporarily, for the next one we will ask.
Now, just one question for you, Ms. Lyons, since this, since we get the snowplow, and, and the county question, since we get the snowplow in fiscal year twenty-four, does this come out of fiscal year twenty-four budget or fiscal year twenty-three budget?
So I don't think that we will actually procure it before May first, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So it will be, even though it's authorized to purchase now, it'll still be a twenty-twenty-four.
Right. So it's not in the budget we just talked about.
It is not in the budget.
It may be in the next budget.
Yeah, that's correct.
If it shows up early, we may be coming back here asking for.
Yeah.
I don't see a merit of that. It's probably that.
I have two questions. One is, um, is there any deposit that's required at all? We're just saying, get us a trunk?
Um, I don't believe that, uh, so this particular cabin chassis is the, is the piece that takes so long to get, um, this is on a state bid, so I don't believe that we've ever had to put a deposit down.
Okay. Um, second question then is, just because I'm looking at our sweeper, that's my experience, do we need to have this funded or budget or, or some kind of payment or?
So, um.
Financing, that's more.
Yeah, so, um, at this time, I really don't expect it'll come into our next, um, budgeting, you know, like the budget that you just approved, it is not in there, I don't expect it to actually arrive before the end of that fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, so we will be, um, evaluating where we're at, obviously, um, at this time next year, it'll be in the budget. Okay, all right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions about this? That's, and I would like a motion to, uh, authorize a purchase of a twenty-four, uh, international snowplow dump truck. Second. Questions or comments?
Is it purchase, I mean?
Authorize a purchase.
Authorize a purchase.
Mr. Deputy Carter?
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Mount?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Spohr?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Both pass six zero. I'll take the next one, uh, if you like, so trustee Coe had contacted myself and Mr. Hedges about dry cutting, actually, he brought this up a few months back, um, and so it is, it is becoming a problem again, so he took the ball and ran with it, and so he's got, I love handouts, so he's got some handouts in front of us, and so I'll let Mr. Coe talk about what he thinks of it.
You can read, you can read this, in the construction industry, uh, it's now prohibited, you have to use water, uh, when the village cuts concrete, they use water. Um, we currently don't have that, uh, built into the permit, correct? Mr. Ray?
Nothing I know.
Okay, uh, so what, here's what happens, so somebody goes, gets a permit to do a concrete driveway three houses down from you, June, July, whatever, they come back the following day, they have to cut control joints, they dry cut them, that dust is now in the air. It goes into your home, it goes into your conditioning unit outside, to your control panels, to all your computer stuff outside, you have a camper or boat, it goes in, and it's a dust. When the dust gets wet, it reconstitutes almost to a, uh, liquid, uh, pancake batter, if you will. Uh, it's very caustic, it wrecks things, uh, along with you not knowing they're concrete cutting, so you have your windows open, you're at work. So all that dust is coming into your home and wrecking everything, so you can read this. So my proposal is, in the ordinance, I want to add, if you're for concrete driveway cut, um, for drive, for concrete driveways, that they have to wet cut, dry cutting is prohibited, as is, uh, OSHA's ruling.
Would it be, would it be just for a driveway?
Yeah.
Concrete.
So, so, so he wants to prohibit a dry cutting of concrete within the village area?
And you can read the, you can read the damage that it does to your children and to your elderly parents, um, and eventually you.
And I think, you've even, you've even talked about this a while ago, when you guys, um, you say, you always use water, right? We, well, for grinding wood, but wood is just as dangerous, but I, I just bought some property from somebody, he just had a double lung transplant, and I said, what caused it? He said, cutting paving brick.
Yeah, and you can see the pictures that I included, this dust, depending on wind, will wait for blocks. So here you are, a block and a half away, and you got your children out playing on a Saturday, they poured this driveway on Friday, they come back and cut it Saturday, you know, in an hour's time, your kids are gonna breathe this, or your parents, or you're gonna have your windows open, so now your dogs get affected, all your appliances. Read this, this is serious stuff, and the dust will reconstitute.
This is also, everything.
It's also, concerns not just commercial, but residential as well, because this could be a little hand cutting, um, I just saw it a couple of days ago, cutting concrete with a small hand saw and dust everywhere, so we're saying that this is gonna apply to everybody, commercial, residential, every.
Any concrete or by doing this concrete or brick, is what it should be.
I don't, I don't see an issue with that, if this board doesn't see it, I would, I would tell Mr. Hedges, can we get something on that?
We would absolutely agree, and I'll just share with you that I spoke to all of our major contractors in the town, and none of them would, would have a dry cut at this point. That is an OSHA violation, it's just that OSHA doesn't have people out here to enforce, so we have to, which is more than, and with, with the authority, we can do that.
I don't think it's a, it's a major contractor issue, I think it's when.
No, it's a small guy.
What you call it, a small landscaper to put in some brick, or grind out some mortar, hit some top planning or.
It's, it's, it's not an OSHA violation if you're. Like, if you have people, and you have more than five employees or whatever, then it's an OSHA violation.
Right.
I think you have to wear a respirator.
Yeah, you have to wear an OSHA. But one thing I would suggest is maybe just look at, um, they make dry systems that have a vacuum right there, and they're dust-free as well.
Right, but these little concrete companies that don't, aren't gonna buy that.
The brick guy, so my son-in-law does the brick, and that's what he's got for health, so. Would you be comfortable with dust-free as opposed to a dry cut?
No.
So what, my thought would be, is, you know, imitation is the best, the best form of flattery, there, we can't be the only village that has or is.
No, I think Mr. Schuster's already done some research into this.
No, so what are other towns doing, are they saying wet cut only?
Well, I didn't, I didn't find a. I'm sorry, I was speaking to that. What, you mean other towns? I, I have not, uh, seen a number of other towns. Uh, this handout relates to New Jersey, which is a state OSHA, and they're the first in the country, they took the lead and, and have required wet cutting. But a simple solution is to say that a wet saw is required for any cutting, concrete masonry, paper bricks, uh, or any pavement. You can allow an exception if there's a practical difficulty, but then there has to be what are called engineering controls, which is the vacuum system that Mr. Bergman recommended or suggested, or, and or protective treatment for the operator, which is a rest, a mask.
But that doesn't help the rest.
Well, it does if there's the vacuum system, it, it at least reduces, uh, you know, the dust that would be escaped.
And here's what's gonna happen with that, three doors down from you, the guy that poured that driveway, he's coming back tomorrow, guess what he's gonna do? He's gonna stand there with a shop vac while the guy's cutting, and so, I got my vac system.
Well, that's not, you're, you're right, he will, he will probably.
I've been in this business forty years, I poured more concrete than water, believe me.
He's a player that we're. But anyway, I, I can draft an ordinance for your consideration to amend the building code to include this type of restriction for your next meeting. And Mr. Mayor, um, we did check with our building officials and, and, uh, St. Bill tells us that most communities do not.
Okay, perfect, let's steal something from one of those guys then, instead of coming up with our own.
You know, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Sure. As long as we have some best practices.
I want to make sure I understand here that while they're including, just the homeowner and myself, I go out there with a small saw and I cut, that includes me too, right?
No cutting of concrete.
Okay.
Not by you or me or the company or anybody, right?
Right. Which means no dry cutting.
No dry cut, yeah.
Dry cutting, no dry cutting.
It says any cutting must be wet, wet saw. You can buy a wet saw, one people.
You can buy, you can use a regular concrete saw, you can use your skill saw, they make a ten dollar pump-up spray can that's got a hose that clips on with water. You just pump it up to pressurize it, and all you gotta do is turn it on, ten bucks.
Garden hose doesn't work?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know. You don't always have a garden.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, you hook the garden.
I've got one of these saws, it's like a, um, uh, it's a skill with a cutter wheel, it's got a spot for the hose to plug in.
Okay.
So that's more for the home than an industrial type use? Rhino wants to cut a couple of bricks. Judy can hold the hose. Let's cut it.
I've seen recently.
Don't hurt your eyes.
The homeowner is cutting dry and the dust is going everywhere. It's not commercial, it's not somebody coming in from outside, it's the homeowner is standing there doing.
Yeah, but I think as we have these type of ordinance changes, I would recommend trustee Porter that we consider making sure they're in the next newsletter after that ordinance change.
I agree, I'm hoping that Mr. Rosetti is listening and heard that particular statement, so, yes.
Upon passing and approval.
Yes, that's what, in, in the future, when we make changes to our ordinances, we should include it.
This one might even, since construction season is here, and, and I don't wanna go out and get that driveway or use those paper bricks, now this one might even warrant a, a Facebook or social media post like, hey, just so you know, new for the year, you know, because the next newsletter is, how many months away?
Uh, the deadline.
Twenty-second of, of this month is the deadline.
Yes, I don't think it'll make this.
I don't think it'll make it.
Because we can't preemptively put it in because you guys voted that. So. Well, I, I appreciate.
You may have voted on it the night before, so we, we can work with Bill to try and get something.
I really appreciate it, uh, trustee Coe, for bringing this up, um, and it's a great idea, so let's get it done.
There'll be any.
Okay, monthly reports.
We just have our monthly report, there's a question.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, can I ask something? I heard you mentioned my name, what was it you mentioned my name for?
You're in charge now.
We're gonna, I'll, I'll give you a call tomorrow, Bill.
Okay.
On an article in the newsletter.
Uh, we need more pages.
Oh, good, well, have you covered. All right.
Just ask if there's any questions about the, uh, arch building report, water loss report, uh, streets report.
If we can go in depth, or you can look them over at your leisure, and ask any additional questions that you have to the appropriate staff member.
Just real quick on the bill, on the, like, for public works, their, their salt dome collapsed, because it's, it's a, uh, a hoop still, it's like a tarp.
Yeah.
Uh, with aluminum frame, and then finally the wind got it, so that's, uh.
Would be about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Seventy-five hundred bucks, reflex.
Would that build a similar building or something?
No, I'll go for another one, they last about five years, it's just an aluminum, uh, frame with a, with a tarp over the, over it.
Do we want to look into something more structurally sound?
No, it wants to wait till we get the new building.
Okay.
That's in the next one.
Okay. You'll see the accounts payable to personnel? Anyone have any questions about the accounts payable to personnel? Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable, uh, to personnel in the amount of one thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Oh.
Questions, comments? We'll call both, please. Mr. Mount?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Spohr?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
All right.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Both pass six zero. Next is the big one, review all the pages and answer all the questions. Does anyone have any questions? Any questions at all?
Page four.
There it is.
The new pump for, I'm just checking to see where that was, was that for the water department then, I'm assuming?
No, we actually gave it to McDonald's, no, I'm.
Yeah, I saw that, that's what.
It's a, it's a lift station.
It's a lift station.
Lift station pump at the McDonald's, but they call McDonald's, I guess it's right there.
Because it's right there, okay.
Question, on page nine, can you put this in mind, because sometimes I forget, what is the Mid American Energy Services?
That's an electric bill.
For?
Uh, what page are you on?
Nine.
Okay.
And I see there's four different accounts.
Yep, those are, uh, so the ones that begin in thirty are water facilities, thirty-one is the late water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, page eleven. Yeah, that bill, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars in parking tickets?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's our reorder of new parking ticket.
Oh. They bring it in out.
They bring it in out.
Why is it?
So that pays for itself.
It does. Sometimes.
Whole bunch of books. They might briefly tell a board, on parking tickets, the village gets it all, ten bucks, twenty bucks?
Thirty-five.
Oh.
Is the winner?
On, on D Y speeding tickets and stuff, what do we get?
Thirty-five.
For the, the toes?
No, 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 for, uh.
Speeding tickets, oh.
Seven, ten bucks?
Yeah, maybe around, yeah, twenty-five, something like that.
Yeah, the state and the county get the rest.
Oh, it's a big job, yes, doing ROI on this nine hundred bucks.
Does anybody else have any constructive questions?
Last question for me, page seven, um, the Jacobson and Associates, there was a fifty percent down for an appraisal, and I just wanted to know what the appraisal was.
So we're going to appraise the home that's located at ninety-one South State Street that is village-owned.
Okay.
Um, uh, preparing for a potential sale.
She, uh, she spilled my thunder.
Okay.
I was gonna bring that up, that White House, the fire department uses, gonna bring that up under new business.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just gonna bring it up under new business, but it's here, so there's a, there's, there's an individual in town, uh, that has a business in town that is looking for another place to be. Um, he doesn't like any of the other places, and had the idea of maybe purchasing that home over here on the corner. Um, Mr. Hedges asked for approval to at least get an appraisal, to see what it would be worth, because real estate market is hot right now. And so I told Mr. Hedges to take the ball and run with it, and then before we could, we haven't gotten that far in the process, but we bought the home at one point or another to make sure that it would stay, you know, to turn it into a business use at some point, so my only condition, uh, that I told Mr. Hedges was, is I'm okay with going for the appraisal, but if we do go to sell the home at some point, one, uh, we have to make sure that it's rezoned for business as part of the sale conditions, or it has to be done prior to. Chief Herman and I talked at the very beginning, like, when I first, when we first came on this whole board, and we came out with our, what our long-term plans were with the house, and we really didn't have any at the point, at that, and it was always understood that there was a potential at some point that we might sell it for business use onlys. And so the only concern that we had at the time was we wanted it to meet code, so that's why we spread the cost of the, um, painting. Um, again, we, Chief Herman and I haven't had deep conversation about this process at the, at, at this time, but again, we, he uses the house, or the fire department uses the house because it's there, um, it's more of a convenience, and so we were more than happy to do so as long as we're using it, but it's, you know, at the same time, if we can get more than we paid for the house, then it was a good investment.
I thought we bought that property being more like a gateway entrance to the village.
No, we bought that property in hopes that after seventy-two was done, that somebody would come in and pay insane money for the lot. That's what we bought it for.
So, like I said, it's not, it's not, it's very preliminary, it's very preliminary, and I, and it's not that we're trying to keep, you know, the, the, our negotiations, right, so. But that's a long story, but I'm not gonna hide anything.
Yeah, it is very preliminary, he's just expressed an interest, and we're gonna get a number and find out, it's, it's all public information, the village made, uh, ninety-seven, ninety-seven-five or ninety-seven, seven thousand eight hundred, the house and the lot next to it, that was all public information.
It's not remodeled, remodeled.
It's, it's just deteriorating. We did look into having, uh, fixed up at one point, because a chamber considered using it as an office at one point, and the cost of repair was really high. Uh, we also looked at demolition costs, but we'll, we'll get into that when we come back to you. If this happens.
Mr. Hedges, when it's appraised, are they gonna take into consideration all the improvements that are being done at that intersection as well?
Yeah.
That was why we purchased it.
Well, I know, because we're doing the appraisal now, so I just wanted, because it's not done yet, but.
We've told, first of all, that, that house is not on village water, really, and it has its own well, so we will require that it connect to village water and be rezoned, and, and consider all the, it's here an appraisal for that very reason, it's a commercial property, instead of residential.
Okay.
I think that house is built in like eighteen ninety-six or something like that, yeah, so that's, that, uh, I went into the basement of the cellar, if you will, one of the main trusses for the house is a tree trunk with actual bark on it. So anyway, all right, so, so with, with, are everybody's questions answered to their satisfaction? If so, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Some old. Uh, okay, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Spohr?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Mount?
Hi.
Both pass six zero. Okay, Mr. Kelly, you're up, this is Phil McMission.
Uh, D C will be meeting next week on April thirteenth, here at the village at six thirty P M.
Okay, public relations.
I don't remember the, what we were supposed to say, I'm so sorry, because it's been so long.
You wanted to talk about the, uh, new news, in statements.
In PR?
You guys, you're, you're the chair, you can put it wherever you want, you can talk about it in PR if you like.
It's been a long, okay.
No, I'm, I'm being serious, you, you don't talk about it in the PR, you can, because it's PR related, or we can talk about it in new business, however you want to do it.
No, I mean, after our PR meeting, I don't, we said we were gonna say something, and I don't remember what.
Oh, that I can help you.
Yeah, so now you've got me sitting over there, so you don't have a meeting that we've, no, okay, good, our next meeting is the twenty-eighth at, uh, six thirty P M, as regularly scheduled.
Thanks, no.
I, I got him, I got my minutes in, like, before I left the building.
Uh, one thing that came out of that is that Miss Vasquez will be doing another competition here at the village for Easter. She will be doing a jar of jelly beans, and I don't know if this is a prize or not, but the, the, not jelly beans anymore, it's the, it's the covered eggs.
Malted milk balls.
Okay, all right, all right, well, either way, the, the prize or pennant for winning this competition will be having lunch with me.
Yay.
So, depending on how you wanna look at it.
Do we have the milk balls at once?
I'll guess like, you know, one.
Okay.
Uh, trustee, so trustee Coe will not be playing that game.
Gonna make the weather take the candy too, because those M and X got all eaten right here by staff.
That's an admission.
All right, anything further for public works or public relations? Sorry, public, uh, public relations. Okay, public works, you're up, already reported. All right.
Canopy, canopy has been replaced, and we're getting, getting a new truck.
And, and, a wheel loader's in the budget.
Yeah. When can they get it?
Yeah. For the last four years, you've been saying.
I know it's in the budget, I said. I've already passed that one. When, can they get a check to buy, to get south payment tomorrow?
No.
When can we get that?
It, uh, the budget will go into effect May first, so.
Look, predate the check.
No, take it.
Did you make a call tomorrow, make sure it's still there?
Get it parked in trustee Coe's driveway.
Yeah.
You're in, and you touch a truck right here.
I'll, I got a key for it.
Okay, uh, budget, Mr. Paul Strini?
Just a special thank you to the staff and to Lori, Jay, um, to all of the department heads for all their work in putting this together. It was my first, um, time doing this as a bunch of chairman, and everything was super, super smooth, and any questions that were put forth, it was answered, um, immediately. And then special thanks to the budget committee then for, uh, taking the time to go through everything and all the questions that were put forward, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, new business. Parking, parking van, parking vans over, right?
Yep.
Park on the streets, wanna talk about it?
And then as of today, I believe, uh, yard waste pickup has resumed. So, residents can put their yard waste back out.
Village services just can't get rid of it.
It's new business, we're.
Field drill?
Field drill.
I got eight thousand.
You're up.
Okay, uh, one announcement and a quick question, um, it seems that, uh, Mr. Ben Hattie did earn his Eagle Scout ring. Uh, one announcement and a quick question. Um, it seems that, uh, Mr. Benati did earn his Eagle Scout ring. Just congratulations. It was just announced, so.
And so what did he do to, did someone he did to get it?
The giant shelter in the park.
Your favorite.
Um, and also I was just going to ask, um, I know that Hampshire was in New West and then we found out that. Once they revised the article, they mentioned rural Hampshire, not the village of. And I was just going to ask Chief Thompson if maybe in an educational way you could explain to residents who aren't reviewing. What happens when the FBI is involved in something? Why do we not come through and tell them all of these things? I mean, I understand.
I can, I can walk you through this particular case. I think.
You could even touch on this specific case. You could just say, you could, you could.
In, in general.
About that.
Okay. In general, they will make contact with us. They will share very little information unless it's a public safety issue. Okay, they will get more information from us than we will from them. And so there was contact. I won't go into any details, but it was not in the village. But yes, we do have a good, uh, communication with all area departments, all jurisdictions, and they do rely on us to get background as we do when we're. Doing something out of our area too.
So just, you know, because there's a lot of questions that are being raised. How come we weren't told? Do you know this and that? And we just want, we, you know, it's, it's important for people to understand how it works, you know, it's just.
Sorry to interrupt, but you called, this happened about six, eight months ago and we did inform the board by email that, uh, the FBI wasn't down.
Well, this was, uh, Jay.
In January. I'm talking about a previous incident.
Yes.
A previous incident where we didn't, we didn't know that they were here. In fact, there was, there were people in the street and we wanted residents to know why there were so many. Law enforcement people in the street. So if there is something in the village, you will hear about.
It, it is something that would impact, impact the residents.
Right, yeah.
Not every, not every single.
I don't want you guys.
Correct. It's not, again, there's not every single instance that needs to involve the village.
Right.
Exactly.
And this even went almost three months before it even in the media.
You know, and then, you know, that's the other part. So, I mean, we talked about earlier, right? People see the word Hampshire and they assume it's in town and that it's part of the school system and stuff like that, and it's not always the case. You just, you get that generic label of.
It's nice having the post office here, but every Realtor in Chicago, I think, has a Hampshire address. That's, it's Hampshire calls Josh and says, we want to buy that one.
Sell it to, it's in Figueroa or. Sell it to a couple of them.
Be careful.
Be careful. The one thing just to, you know, and chief, correct me by wrong, is if there's an investigation going on, it's not subject to the freedom of information. So obviously they don't want to alert the whole, everybody that wants to.
There's a need to know.
Yeah.
And, and, and they are sensitive to, uh, you know, public safety as we are. So if, you know.
And the age of, age of people being involved in that investigation, if they're underage, there's even limited, more limited information and that kind of thing. There needs to be a certain level of understanding in general.
And they're not going to announce that we're investigating something so everybody knows and. Cause there's a lot going on.
So that, that was the, the reason for the questions is just so that if, if board members are approached about this situation or any situation in the future. You guys have an understanding of, this is kind of how it works, so maybe we can spread the word. But we don't know everything, right?
I just refer them to a police department. I don't know about it.
Okay, so, uh, another, just another, uh, new business, nothing exciting. Uh, Mr. Hedges and I got to Springfield, uh, as part of Metro West a couple of weeks ago.
How the Republicans do down there?
Uh, not very well. So we met with, we, we met, uh, with, with Dan McCaughy, who was the Senate, uh, minority, uh, leader. And then Jim Durkin, who was a House Minority Leader, and then Chris Welch, who was, who was the Speaker of the House. Don Harmon, who was President of the Senate, and we got to meet, uh, J V Pritzker himself. And so we had an audience with, uh, with them for about a half hour, forty-five minutes each, um, as a group of mayors from Metro West. Um, there weren't that many mayors that came down, so we were one of eight. So we all got FaceTime and all got questions answered. Um, or questions addressed. I don't necessarily know about answered on either side.
Did you ask them for money?
Uh, no, I did not ask for money, but I, what I did was.
You sort of broke up.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Well, no, so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do what other communities did, which was flat out ask people for money for projects. What we did, um, as a group is kind of highlight some of the things that they're doing in Springfield that are impacting us. And their lack of funding initiatives for communities very similar to ours, where, where we don't qualify for any of the. Uh, what are they called? They, they, they said that there were funding available because, so L G D F, right, it's supposed to be a ten percent. But it was cut years ago and they're not fully restoring it. That's the big buzzword. As long as I've been on this board, everybody's always talked about L G D F. Well, the one side of the aisle says that, uh, there's different funding opportunities. And the other side of the aisle is mad about the fact that they cut it. So that's all there is, is a bunch of infighting and then you, and then there's us. Who, our community makes so much money to qualify for these grants, or we don't qualify because we don't meet metrics, or we're not a disadvantaged community. And so then, you know, you ask these guys, you go, okay, well then what? Because there was no other option for us. And so I don't know that we, we, we got anywhere. I don't, I, I don't think that we got anywhere, but it was nice to have the opportunity to, to, to let them know about. Things like body cams. I'm not picking on the chief, right, but they come, they say we need to have body cams by a certain time. And this is what you have to do. And then by the way, you need to pay for it and then pay for all the storage and pay for the training and all this other stuff. And then we go, uh, out, because all they're doing is cutting our funding. So, and, and it becomes really difficult. But anyway, it was a neat, it was a really neat opportunity to have that FaceTime and I feel like. We made a little bit of a difference, but I don't, I don't know how far it got and it was a pretty, it was a pretty neat experience.
How's the former political clout, uh, do down there in Springfield?
My face was not recognized at all down there.
It didn't help that he kept looking like Roush Marx when he walked into Springfield, when he walked into the Capitol, he had a big mustache.
You should have asked him for money. That's right.
I will, I will, um, compliment the mayor. He did a great job. He represented the village and Metro West very well. He was put forward as the small town mayor and, uh, we've seen all the pictures that he is the main guy, so, uh, did a great job.
I appreciate it. I, I had a lot of fun and, um, I was just hoping to get invited back next year, so. So far, they said I'm, I'm a lot back, so, and I didn't end up on any watch lists, so.
Nor a jam.
No, that'd need to know.
You're right. Or a jam, you're right, nor a jam. All right, so do we have any other, oh, one other thing? Uh, programming note, I will not be in attendance for the next board meeting. Um, so the, the next, the, the next, uh, meeting will have to have a temporary, was temporary chair or president, mayor pro temp? I don't know what it is.
Temporary presiding officer.
Temporary presiding officer, so, um, they, do they vote that in or do I choose, then just choose it? I don't remember.
The board, the board would select someone to act in that role at the next meeting.
Okay, so unless the board objects, you know that you guys can change your vote or do whatever you want to do. But unless the board objects, I would like to include trustee co's on any of the meeting agenda. Um, like preparation and that kind of stuff, because, and, and I know that, uh, you guys can choose a president or chair when the meeting happens. But I, I, tradition's always been here that the longest-serving trustee is, gets that, uh, authority. And, and because of that, I'd like to include that trustee in any of the meeting stuff so that he has proper documentation and that kind of stuff, so. And that, that's just my, that's my thought. And, um, just to be a favor, when he's talking, interrupt him loudly and very quickly.
Drag the meeting out.
Yeah.
There's a system when you're down here.
I watched very well.
I want to, it's all beating at dead doors.
Don't get up and go to the bathroom, which we've done.
We've done tonight repeatedly.
Yeah, all right. Well, happy Easter. Happy Easter. I want to have, oh, there's an event this weekend in Spark District, bringing kids. Yes, ten to twelve. Correct. Ten to twelve, you're the expert on it.
Yeah, I just got up to my granddaughter today.
Okay.
Ten to twelve, it's still a, still a pop.
Anything else?
Um, I'd like to wish some of our residents in town a blessed Ramadan as they are serving for the next three weeks.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Thank you all. Sir Debbie, Ms. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Thor?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
It's your co.
I'll tell you, it's a, bye. All right, I got hearing aids about.
Mr. Matt? Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Coach Pass Six Zero. All right.
Before we all leave, just one thing I forgot to say, the Hampshire society does have a meeting on, uh, the twenty-eighth.